Okay, we're ready. Okay, I'd like to open this meeting of the City Council for January 21st, 2021. Could everybody stand and salute the flag with me? Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do we have all council members here?
I'm not sure if Councilman Ramirez was is connected as of yet, but he's getting connected if he's not presently.
Manny, are you on board?
I don't see him in the list yet.
We'll give him a minute and then we'll try to go ahead and start. Manny, are you available? Okay, Larry, can you let us know when he comes on board?
No problem.
Okay. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, I do. So, in item 6.3 and 6.5, and those will be brought back at a later date.
6.3 and 6.5. Okay.
One moment, Manny's with you guys now.
Counsel, do I have an approved agenda?
I believe Manny is Manny on now?
Manny, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Okay, just want to make sure you're here.
Yeah, sorry about that. I was having trouble.
Not a problem. Okay, number two, awards, presentation, and appointments and proclamations, we have not. Citizen comments, this section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the City Council on any item within the jurisdiction of the council. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern, identify their self, and use the microphone. Or use Zoom. I added that in there. Comments are normally limited to three minutes according to state open meeting laws. No action will be taken by the City Council this evening, and all items will be referred to staff for a follow-up and a report. Do we have any?
I believe that we will have some that want to make comments via Zoom so they can start identifying themselves, but while they're doing that, I do have two that were emailed in that I'll read on behalf of the city clerk.
Okay, thank you.
So, the first one is an anonymous comment, and it says, first, I would like to thank council for their unanimous vote against breaking their promise and assurances put in place with the marijuana distance requirements that were previously requested by a councilman and now marijuana business owner. I see now that there is a new council and it is being brought back. I would hope that this council that consists of both previous and new members show the same respect, integrity, and honesty by keeping those distances in place just as they were promised and assured to the citizens. I would suggest putting it on a ballot when there are funds to do so due to the fact that the vast majority of citizens feel betrayed or fear or being targeted should they dare speak against it. In closing, please remember why you are in your position and who put you there.
Thank you.
I have one more, and it is from Melanie Vargas. So she emailed her comment in, and it says that she is ill and unable to make the comment herself, but she would like it read tonight. Good evening, council members. Blessings to all on your new positions. My name is Melanie Vargas. 2020 was a crazy year, but in 2021, I pray we can all rebuild and our beautiful city will shine. Recently, I had an issue with one of my dogs, and Give Me Love Animal Shelter went way above and beyond to get my boy home. Lexi and Lori are both amazing, and the love and compassion that they showed to my big baby means the world to me. This made me want to do something special for them. I have a challenge for all five of you council members, so I'm introducing Pounds of Love. For the next 30 days, we will have a Pounds of Love sheet with each of your names on it. The council member that has the most pounds of dog food and cat food donated will be presented with a pretty awesome gift. Anyone can donate in your name. Donations can be dropped off Monday through Friday between 1:00 and 4:00 p.m. at Give Me Love. At the next council meeting, I will let you all know what pounds you have so far. Let's make this contest fun and support our awesome shelter that we all wanted so much. If you have any questions, you can contact me. I think most of you have my contact information, and if not, you can get it from Marissa. Thank you for your time. May you all be blessed, Melanie Vargas. And then I also received via email some tracking sheets for this Pounds of Love program that she wants to do, so I can make copies for the council members if you're interested.
Thank you. Shannon, do we have any more on Zoom?
It looks like Mr. Nathan Bossberg would like to make a comment.
Jason, are you there? Or I'm sorry, Nathan?
Hey, Nathan? You should be able to speak now.
Nathan? Not yet. Can you guys read that?
Hello, hello, hello. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor and council, I just wanted to give a comment on a couple of the items, starting with 5.11 on the consent calendar. I just want to say that I'm amazed that we're finally at this point to have a reserve account. That's amazing. That's one of the most amazing things ever. I hope that you guys approve that tonight. Hats off to everyone that is going to make this happen. It's been at least, you know, multi councils moving towards this, paying off the debt and getting to a position. And I want to thank Jasmine, for sure, for, you know, making this happen. What a great deal. And then I want to talk about 6.1, which is the cannabis distance requirements. This is a rather small stretch of land that only actually enables the other side of the street near where you already have enabled. This is your chance. This is your chance to create more core cannabis revenue. There are buildings in the vicinity that are ready to sell right now, and they can be used for the revenue for the city ASAP. The tax revenue from the sale of the buildings would immediately come to the city as soon as the county releases those funds, and the ability to make, you know, revenues is huge. The, for the new council members, the only way the city makes money is via taxes. That's it. The fee structure is just for fees, and that pays for the cost of doing business. Police and fire, 75% of our budget, cannabis funds, police and fire. If you, the more police and fire you want, the more you're going to allow the cannabis. Without the cannabis, we wouldn't be where we're at right now. You want these funds. You do. If you say no to this item tonight, it can't come back for a year, is my understanding. So do the right thing for the city and create that rep, do this for the future. This could be millions in tax revenue. The businesses around this, as far as I understand, no one's complained. The, the, the school that's within the, the distance, I, I'm pretty sure they would have called in to complain if, if they were against this as well. The person that called in against this item, I think we all know who that is, and it's sad that, that we still have this going on even with the new council. But do the right thing. Pass this, make it go. This is going to bring you guys in that money you're going to need for the future. 6.2 for, is the 477 acres? I'd say cut off like 10 acres and sell that if you can. Do it as a starter project, see how it goes. That can bring in millions of revenue. And on 6.4, the youth in government? Yes, yes, yes. Love it. Work experience, jobs, scholarships, junior council members? I love it. Sounds like a great plan. This could help recruit, recruit future city workers. Hats off to whoever come up with this idea and whoever's moving this forward. I see it, the cost is around 18, up to 18K. I'm sure that this will pay itself. If you, once you guys hear the, the presentation for this, I read through it, it's, it's really, really good. So anyhow, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you, and God bless. Have a good night.
I don't see anymore.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Okay.
We can hear you now.
May, okay. Thank you. I think I must have lost you guys there for a moment. Mayor Ramsey, I do not see any, any other comments at this time.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a, this item may look familiar to you. This, we had to renotice a public hearing for the adoption of the Urban Water Management Plan, which subsequently previously had been adopted by the council. There was a little hiccup with the Hanford Sentinel's ability to post multiple public notices rather than just, instead of doing two, they did one. So we didn't meet the requirement for the public noticing. So we had to renotice this prop, this, this particular item. I'm going to go through it since it is an official public hearing, just so for anybody that wasn't available at the previously public hearing. But on January 20th, the city entered into a contract with AM Consulting Engineers to complete our 2015 Urban Water Management Plan. Urban Water Management Plans are important tools for reporting water agencies' long-term planning efforts to meet future demands and tracking progress towards achieving state-mandated water conservation targets. They also support state laws linking approval for large developments to water supply availability. The California Legislature enacted the Urban Water Management Planning Act. It requires that every urban supplier that provides water to 3,000 or more customers or provides more than 3,000 acre foot of water annually ensure the appropriate level of reliability to meet the needs of its customers during normal, dry, and multiple dry years. The act describes the contents of the Urban Water Management Plan as well as how urban water suppliers should adopt the and implement the plans. Plans updated are required every five years, and updates maintains the water authority's eligibility for state grants, so water planning is a central function of water suppliers, but is critical as California grapples an ongoing drought and expected long-term climate changes. Urban suppliers provide information on water management specific to their service areas. However, water management does not happen in isolation. There are other planning processes that integrate with the Urban Water Management Plan to accomplish urban planning. The 2015 Urban Water Management Plan relies on planning documents prepared by the city of Colinga, the city's 2007 to 27, 2027 general plan, and the Fresno County multi-jurisdictional housing element. So tonight, this is a public hearing, so Mayor, if you would be, be able to open up the public hearing, gain comment, any discussion, and then move for adoption of the plan. And if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer any of those questions.
One, oh, one second, Mayor. I think you're still muted. Are you muted?
Okay.
There you go.
Sorry about that. Are there any questions from the council? Okay, I'd like to open this public hearing for the adoption of the Colinga 2015 Urban Water Management Plan. Anybody?
Is it okay if I talk?
Mary?
Yes.
Are you going to talk about the urban, we're in the public hearing for the urban water?
I wanted, I wanted to address that. We have a document here that's 185 pages long, and is there a way that someone could summarize some of the highlights? And tell us what it is since it's quite lengthy and covers a zillion things?
Yeah, our consultant, Alfonso, is on the line. He might be probably the best, they are the ones that prepared the document for the city, that they might be able to give a quick highlight of the areas that the plan covers.
So, I think, I think as a resident, one of the things that concern me is, is does this management plan take into account the repairs and deferred maintenance and things like that that we have had to address as the city? Is that, is that included in this plan?
It pretty much, this is the majority of the, the water system in terms of the, as a whole. So yes, it would, it would, it would include looking at those items as well, but a lot of it looks at the, the actual amount of water, the, the future demand based on future growth, and, you know, basically the water, the future water uses. But in terms of maintenance, it, it kind of highlights that a little bit.
Okay, because, okay. I just want to know if that, if that, all of that maintenance and stuff is covered in here. That's all, because it, it seemed like it was quite extensive.
Yeah, it's primarily about water usage and availability of water and reliability of that water delivery long-term. So it's really about the system itself. But maintenance does play a role in terms of the reliability of the system, but it really comes down to the actual water, the physical water itself, and having that available allocation to the community.
Okay, thank you.
Is Alfonso available?
Yeah, I, I'm here, Sean. I can give you a little, you know, quite quick summary of what the report is, is about. I'd say this is a requirement of the Urban Water Management Plan, and Plan Act required by the California Water Code, and it's primarily now a requirement for any agency that is trying to access any sort of state funding to have these, these planning documents, much like your, maybe your housing elements are, or your, so it's, it's, it's a document, it's a planning document intended to look at, at, at the current water situation. It also establishes some goals. It looks at, it, it looks at the historical water use for the last 10 years, establishes a per capita water use, and of course, this is the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan, which was, it was due a few years back, and soon there's going to be the 2020 Urban Management Plan due. It's, it's due every, every five years. And what this document is also supposed to establish is what is your baseline water consumption and what is your target water consumption? You're supposed to save 20% of your 2015 baseline by year 2020. So that, this document indicates what that baseline is and what they, what the target, what the target consumption will be for the year 2020, much like we've seen in most, most of other cities. When these plans were prepared, they were taking into consideration consumptions from 2005 through 2000, 2010, and years in which we didn't have much of any of the conservation measures that we have today with the drought that happened in the mid, in 2014, 15, a lot of cities implemented very drastic conservation features, and I think people became more conscious about saving water. And so you're, you're now, or your 2015 consumption was already at the target to, to meet the 2020, the 2020 goal. Now, the 2020, I, I don't have the most recent data for 2020, but that will come up in the, in the 2020 plan, but I think consumption have stayed pretty stable. It also talks about water continues, water shortage contingency planning and describes what sort of prohibitions are there, what the stages of action, when a dry year come, when a second year dry, drought comes, what different stages are. It defines those, and it defines what users are allowed or is allowed in any of those stages. It, it also talks about, you know, what, what, what demand management measures have the city implemented in the last few years, like with water waste prevention, metering, conservation pricing, what kind of public education outreach the city has done. It also, it talks about, like Sean was mentioning, it talks about reliability for the future and what are maybe the constraints on, on the water sources, such as maybe declining water quality, climate change, legal constraints. It does describe the water system and, and the condition of the water system and that kind of thing, but it doesn't, it doesn't really address that as a, I don't think this planning document is, is intended to address more of the maintenance issues in the, in the system. It's more intended to be a, kind of a quantity and resources, whether the city's going to have those resources available for the planning horizon. And the document indicates that, yeah, the city has the water and resources even during multiple dry years. Looks like the city has adequate water supply through year 2040. Any, any questions?
Any questions, Council? Any questions from the audience?
Mayor Ramsey?
Yes.
It looks like Ethan Bossberg would like to speak again.
Okay, go ahead, Nathan.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right, so I just want to first make sure you guys actually read this. It's quite lengthy document. It has all kinds of information in it. In the years past, when we've had droughts, I remember battling with the state of California, literally battling for trying to keep our water. A lot of times, the people don't take into consideration that we have a state hospital, we have a prison, their conditions can change. And I guess my question is, is this a legal binding document or is this just a path? And, and I guess that's what I want to know. I mean, because if not, you guys really need to take some time and read this stuff. There's all kinds of things in here. I don't know that, you know, that if you just skimmed over it, that, that someone could make a good decision on this. And I don't think very much information has been put out to the public in a way that we can understand what's going on. I appreciate the information from the consultant, but even that information right there, you know, is, I mean, this document's huge. It has a lot of information in there, so I just want to make sure that you guys read it and that you understand it, and that you're not just going to blindly vote for something. And then also that, that it's not a legal binding document like an ordinance, and that if you guys want to change something, that you can. Oh, and also understand you guys are, you guys are selling farms water too, so that's another thing to take into consideration. So I'm just making sure that all that stuff's in place. Thank you for hearing, hearing me out. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Do you, Sean, do you know the answer to that question on the legal binding?
It's, it's a planning document, so, I mean, there's, there's policies, there's guidelines in terms of, you know, addressing some of these and how the city will address them. Although, once this document's adopted, we'll be entering in most likely to a contract the next few months for doing the 2020. So it's just a, it's a basically an analysis of the water system in the past, and then also looking to the future, kind of like a general plan, but not as, not as binding. But a lot of this is basically just identifying current policies, what actions the city has done in the past regarding these topics, because as you can see from the plan, every single section that's identified or answered is based on a requirement by the state, by the California Water Code. So a lot of these sections are answered based on statistical data that the city is either by action that the city has already done. Then it also looks, looks at the, the ability to be able to provide that water service and what contingencies are in place. But as mentioned, a lot of it has to do with current policies that are in place, like referencing our water conservation ordinance that we have currently, but this would not be an ordinance, no. It's a document that's submitted to the state and approved by the state.
Okay, any other questions from the council?
Go to 20% less by 2025? Did I hear that right?
Yeah, and that's state.
Is that per capita or is that the city as a whole, total allocation?
It would be for, it'd be for the urban supplier.
Or copy to per day.
For, for increasing population, but still trying to decrease water?
It takes into, it takes into account the population.
Okay.
Yes.
So you wouldn't have to go down 20% and gain 1,000 new residents.
Now, is that, is that our allocation or is that our, our usage? Because.
It's based on historical.
Yeah, so.
That's correct, right, Alfonso?
Correct. It calculates the, it looks at the population from year, it calculates like a 10 to 15-year baseline and a five-year baseline, calculates the total water use and, and the population, so it comes up with, with gallons per capita per day. And, and those are, that's how the, the compliance is determined. So you could have an explosion boom from 2015 to 2020 and duplicate your, double your, your consumption is, but what it matters is the consumption per capita.
And we're, and that's why we work diligently to even try to control unbilled water or water loss, because if it's unbilled, then it's, that's what you, that can contribute to that, you know, 20%. So try to keep that number down as low as possible, at least under 10% to continue to keep that number down, so we're making sure we can really control the water that's being consumed.
So, I'm understanding this on the, on the usage. It's, is it 20% of the, how much they allocate us?
Historical, historical.
Historic, that they allocate, it's not our usage.
Historical usage. Historical use.
Because they, they lower our usage all the time.
Yeah, and that's why we've been doing our best to try to, in wet years, sell all excess untreated waters to, to meet that allocation, because we have a 10,000 square, 10,000 acre foot contract. But typically, we're probably in the 5,000 range in terms of water for like what we call municipal industrial water. And so our goal is to sell the untreated waters to, say, the farmers to show that historical number a lot higher, because that's the way that USPR has been managing the drought years and how they allocate the, so that 70%, it's going to be 70% of historical.
Right.
So.
And I, I know we were trying to sell it to keep our allocation up.
Exactly, yeah. We've been working on that.
Don't want to mess up with your allocation at all.
No, and we've been working on that. Fortunately, this current water year that's going to be ending in the end of February has been challenging because of the fact that we've had no excess water to sell due to the fact of the, of the drug, the reduced allocation this year. So in the wet years, when we get the 100% allocation, that's when we try to sell all as much untreated sale, untreated water as we can.
If the state would just develop a proper water plan, we would not be in this position right now, this stupid. You know, I was.
Oh, yeah. Any other questions? Counsel? Do I have a motion to accept this? Oh, wait, I'm sorry. We have to close the public hearing? Unless there's somebody else that wants to say something? Okay, that, it's closed. Okay, do I have a vote? Or have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
It's been moved in second, a roll call please?
I'm sorry, was that Councilman Atkinson and Councilman Singleton?
Right.
Okay, Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilman Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Horn?
Aye.
And Mayor Ramsey?
I also vote aye, thank you. And I know the city of Avonale just passed that too. Let's talk to one of the council members over there and he was talking about it too, and we, we kicked back questions back. And they just passed it also. Okay, next, we'll go to another public hearing, public hearing and adoption of resolution number four thousand approving the submittal of a twenty twenty community development block grant. CV two and three application, Marissa?
Okay, sorry, I had my microphone off, thank you. So the recommendation is to open the public hearing to accept comments on the city's proposed submittal of an application in response to the twenty twenty state community development block grant. Also known as CDBG, notice of funding available, which we call a NOFA, and to solicit citizen input. So what you have before you, we're asking you to not only open the public hearing, but also to adopt resolution number four thousand. Which then reviews and approves an application for up to three hundred and fourteen thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars. Under the NOFA for the following eligible activities. Public, public service substance payments, that would be rent, mortgage and utility assistance in the amount of one hundred and four thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars. And economic development, business assistance in the amount of two hundred and ten thousand dollars. There's also a general administration fee. And we're also asking that you determine that federal citizen participation requirements were met during the development of the application. Authorize and direct the city manager or designees to enter into and sign the grant agreement and any subsequent amendments with the state of California for the purposes of the grant. And if the application is approved, authorize the city manager or designees to transfer or modify budget amounts and activities as necessary to fully expend CDBG program funds. And to execute loan documents, fund requests and other required reporting forms. So there is information here, there are attachments that go over the guidelines for businesses and for anyone who would be seeking rental, mortgage or utility assistance. You would have seen yesterday, we put out the flyers for cycle one, this is for two and three. And so it would be adding additional funding to the programs that were in the flyers that you saw yesterday. And those are posted on the city Facebook page and the city website, that is for rent, mortgage and utility assistance, but this would also be adding in the business grants. So the cost for CDBG to prepare this grant application for us is, or I'm sorry, for self-help to prepare this CDBG grant application is twenty-five hundred dollars. And the intent is for income eligible households in need of rent, mortgage and/or utility assistance. And then the economic development, also known as the business assistance, is to income eligible businesses with the ability to meet job retention or job creation requirements. A lot of these guidelines are set forth by CDBG. And so we don't have a lot of input as far as determining what the income requirements are or what the, the eligibility requirements are for businesses. But this is a time to open the public hearing and get input from the community about this.
Okay. We're, we are now opening, opening the public hearing for the adoption resolution four hundred approving a, the submittal of a twenty twenty community development block, block grant. CV two and three application. Anybody like to talk on this?
Mayor Ramsey, I see no comments from the public.
Thank you. Use our, what, what did we have before in, in?
So we did, we received a grant from Fresno County of an allocation of their CARES Act funds. And we did not include mortgage assistance, it was rental assistance and utility assistance and also small business grants. And we were able to set the guidelines for that. And we did receive quite a few applications, not only from small businesses, but also from residents that used it for rental or utility assistance.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there's not any other questions, I'll close the public hearing and ask the council for a vote. Motion's been made, is there a second? Okay, Miss Horn, I mean, Mayor Pro Tim Horn made the second, roll call please?
I'm sorry, Mayor Ramsey, I didn't catch you made the first. Councilman Singleton?
Yes.
And then, and then Mayor Pro Tim Horn?
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Singleton?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Horn? Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
And Mayor Ramsey?
I also vote aye. Okay, now we go to the consent calendar, number five. Number one is approval of the minutes of the January seventh meeting, twenty twenty-one. Two is approval of the minutes of January seventh meeting, amended special meeting. Three is a tech register for twelve one twenty twenty, twelve thirty-one twenty. Number four is the self-tax update for the quarter. Quarter three of twenty twenty, July twenty through September twenty, information only. Number five, approval of the city sidewalk cost sharing program. Number six, authorize the police department to add a temporary sergeant position. Seven, city manager. Options for staffing code enforcement. Number eight, adopt resolution four oh zero zero one, approving emergency medical technician job description. Adoption of four zero zero two, approving paramedic job description. Number ten, adopt resolution four zero zero three, approving non-safety emergency medical. We're eleven, adopt resolution four zero zero four, approving the general fund and enterprise funds reserve policy for the city for physical year twenty twenty-one. Adoption four zero zero six, approving program guidelines for business assistant payment programs funded with CBD grantment. Number thirteen, public works utility, new development monthly reports for November and December. Is there any item you'd like to pull? Why? Any other one? Okay.
Mayor Ramsey, I apologize, I don't know if the council is unmuting themselves when, when they're speaking, I can really only hear you.
We pulled number five and six so far.
They pulled number, number six.
Thank you.
Any other ones? I like number seven.
Yeah.
On that one too. Okay, anymore? Okay, item number five, question?
For number five, I just want to add something to it, and that is that we prioritize people who have physical disabilities on their sidewalk. I talked to the city manager about it before, kind of get an idea of what I'm saying, she probably helped explain it a lot better than I did.
Yeah, so you want to prioritize residents that are occupied by persons with physical disabilities.
Yes, that's the one. I had it written down, I just didn't bring it with me.
Sean and Marissa, could you guys give us an overview so the citizens know what we're talking about on this?
I'm gonna defer to the man on the box over there, Larry.
Hey, guys, okay, so the sidewalk cost share program is essentially a program that splits the cost of the repair of your sidewalk, of course. It goes a bit further than that. What, what, what would happen under this program is you would apply. Once that happens, then the city would, would send a inspector and then they would have, have, have a look. And then they would be able to determine this section of sidewalk, you must be replaced, these, this curb must be replaced, so on so forth. Anything identified through that inspection must be replaced in order for you to proceed. So you must say, yes, I'm willing to, you know, pay my share to replace, you know, this stuff. So that would happen for however many people were interested in the program for the year. So we're hoping to see a good, you know, response, because the more people that apply through this. The, the more cost effective that it will actually be, because we're going to pile every single applicant into one singular bid. And then we will bid the, the, the workout to the lowest bidder. And then the work is done, once it's all done, then we seek reimbursement from, from the applicants. We have some prices set. For example, to replace a one square foot of a sidewalk, it's seven dollars. Or, I'm sorry, eighteen fifty, that's per square foot, and curb is forty-seven twenty-five. It should be noted that the, that the sidewalk portions are fifty percent, the curb is going to be fully burdened by the city. And if the applicant wants, they can, you know, they can go further, they can do more than what is there, but that will be, you know, fully their cost. So let's say like the city inspector says, you know, you must replace this thirty feet of a sidewalk, but they want to replace fifty feet. That, that little extra bit, they have to pay the full amount for. If you wanted to replace like your apron or your driveway, that would be fully burdened by the citizen. It would be a good time to have this stuff done because it's not much hassle, like this is all being, you know, bid competitively, you know, for you. There's also the issue of tree removal, through some of the inspection, it may be noted that, you know, this one tree here, you know, probably needs to be removed. And the city will be able to, you know, remove that for them and stump ground it and have it, you know, ready. And the citizen won't have to pay anything for that, as long as it's identified through the inspection. Once this is actually approved, then the application will be online, it'll be under the public works section. And then you can, that, or you can actually email me, LMiller@cooler.com. And I should be able to help you. Yeah, that's pretty much it.
So this is actually curb gutters and sidewalks?
Yes.
So that's, that's good, because I, I know everybody's been talking about this for a long, long time and, I mean, we finally got something together, so this is great. I don't, I don't know how long I've heard this and in the past, we've been able, we, we told them we can't do it, you know, but now we can, so that's, that's great.
So.
A great program.
The budgeted amount, I believe, for this next year will be, or, or for this next cycle is going to be fifty thousand. And that's just our cost, so, you know, we're hoping to take up that full amount and see like a project that's potentially like a, you know, like seventy or like eighty thousand. Depending on what kind of work is being requested. But, yeah, the closer that we can get to that fifty thousand mark, the better price that we're going to get and everything's going to be a lot better. If we only get one applicant, this program will not function very well, but we will still seek ways to actually, you know, you know, finish this, so.
What kind of advertising are you going to do on this, just put it on the website?
Website, social media, word of mouth here, we can even put it on the sign, have a, a quick message.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I got a quick question.
Sure.
Say you got a person that's disabled and they're already on low income and are unable to pay the share of cost, what, what do you do then?
So, this was a, because I actually modeled this program after, I believe it was San Rafael. They do have a low income option. But I didn't include that, but that is certainly something that we can look at. The way that's, that, that other people have a, have actually done this was there's a reduced amount for, you know, someone that is, you know, low income. And if that's something that you guys wish to seek out, and then, you know, sure.
All right, I got one more question.
Sure.
If you're a renter and the landlord refuses to pay the share of cost, then what?
So if you are a renter, you must get consent from your landlord to even have this, you know, finished. And whatever they want to work out between, you know, their landlord and the renter, you know, that's, that's, that's between them. But as long as they have signed consent, then, then we're good to go, as far as we're concerned, I believe.
Okay, now is there a loop, if they're a renter and they're disabled and they're still not cooperating? Are they able to file on their own?
Hmm, if they're a renter and they're disabled, so. They would probably, the way that it is written here, the way that that situation would be resolved is that they would. If it was worked out that the landlord said that they would pay for it, then the landlord would be the one who signed it. So then we would be able to go after the landlord directly. If, if the renter said that they would pay it. And then, once, once we send them the bill and then they're saying that their landlord won't pay it. Well, then they're sort of breaching their contract at that point, and then at that point, we would have to go after them, you know, after the person who signed it. If that helps.
It really, it really comes down to like the difference between the, who the owner is and who the renter is.
Right.
Regardless of kind of.
Well, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, well, even, even if the, the landlord denies it and the renter is disabled. Can they file for that same help to help cover the cost if they can't afford that cost and the landlord doesn't?
If, there's, I mean, basically there has to be someone that's going to pay for it, their share, and it has to be, and basically the owner has to sign off on it. So that would be the, the two key things, so if like you're a renter and you're like, okay, I'm, I'll pay for it. Or whatever they work out, as Larry mentioned, if you're going to work out something between your landlord, well, they're going to credit you back on rent for six months. Then they'll, as long as the owner signs off on it, then there's at least a responsible party to pay it. But it really doesn't, it doesn't, it's, it's not based on whether you have a disability or not, it's only based on whether the owner actually signs for the work to be done. Because it has, because you have to sign for the encroachment permit. And since they are technically the, the in fee owner of this, of the, the land per se, the encroachment permit is just for the surface improvements. But there'd be other instances where, I mean, the city is really looking at, you know, a lot of sidewalk improvements as well. So a lot of those situations can be looked at on, on a case by case basis when looking at our larger projects. Because that was one of the things I wanted to add, was that there, one of the processes of this application is that when someone does submit. And they say, hey, I'd like to replace my sidewalk, it's in bad shape, well, we're going to, we're going to take a look at what projects we have in the works. As well as what projects we currently have going on and advise them saying, hey, you know, if you're willing to wait six months or a year, we're going to have, you're going to have new sidewalk or you're, these trip houses are going to be trimmed down so they're ADA compliant. So there's a lot of different options for people as well. But for the most part, we've, we're looking to address the majority of our sidewalk issues. So I assume in some sense, we're kind of working against our program because we're addressed, the city as a whole is addressing them rapidly right now. Although we're not seeing it right this second, but we have a lot in the works that are actually already funded to do a lot of sidewalk improvement. So.
What's the, what's the time limit on the, the share of cost? Do they, do they put in their application? And then get approved? How long do they have to pay their share?
It'll be, I think we've talked, I think it's like thirty or forty-five days after the, after the work is complete.
If I may, yeah, it's, it's, once the work is actually finished, once you can walk on your sidewalk, it is, I think it's twenty or two weeks. And then, you know, at that point, you should receive a bill in, in the, in the mail to reimburse. And I believe there is a process laid out to, if they don't pay.
Yeah. So we use our similar processes we did for, like utility collections and everything if we get, if someone doesn't pay. But yeah, it's two weeks after, after the finish date, we'll, we'll work on getting an invoice out to them and they'll have thirty days to pay the invoice after that.
Now, if it's, if it's high enough, will you guys do like a payment plan or something like that to allow them so many, so many months or?
That's something that, yeah, that's something the council could, could direct staff to do. If you want to include some type of payment plan similar to what we maybe do for utilities, I'm not, ultimately, I'm not familiar with the payment plan for utilities, but we might be able to do something similar to that. Especially if we're talking about instituting some type of income qualification. Then in that instance, there might be an ability that, you know, we can, we can try to work something out that would be some type of payment plan.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll go to item number six.
I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, this is Councilman Ramirez. I had a question, which is my thing is a little bit slow.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, for the sidewalk, what about if like, let's say, you know, just to tailgate a pro term horn. Let's say the renter wants, like wants a sidewalk, but can't afford it, but the landlord doesn't want it. How does that work?
You just want to get it, right? I mean, if the property owner chooses to sign off on it, then it's not going to happen.
Yeah, it just won't happen.
Okay, all right. So for like, for example, over there by Whistles College, that whole area that goes from one corner to the gym. If, but nobody decides to do anything, it just stays like that?
You're kind of hard to hear. Larry, can you turn the volume a little bit?
All right, can you, can you guys hear me clearly now?
A little bit better, yeah.
Okay, well, let's say, for example, right there on West Hills College, that gravel dirt where the church is at. So from there to that, I think there's like a couple apartments. Let's say nobody decides to do nothing. So does it just stay like that for as long or how does that work?
Yeah, that's more, that's more of a kind of a different situation. I know that Caltrans has a proposed maintenance project that was, that's going to address those sidewalks. So in those instances, you know, those are different, those are different projects that we would get to because there's no sidewalk there and the city's definitely looking at those. I think when it comes to the really, when it comes to the, this particular, this particular program is really geared towards residents that maybe have major trip hazards or, you know, breaking concrete where it's, you know, not accessible. Where if, if in fact it's not set up in a project in the future, you know, over two, three years, that we can scout an instance with the, with the resident and on a fifty-fifty split to contribute to repairing those sidewalks sooner than through a grant or through, you know, future budgeted sidewalk improvements.
Okay, all right. And, and that goes to business owners as well, right?
Yeah, yeah. No, it's for business owners as well. Yeah.
Okay, okay. And if they don't want it, but the sidewalk does need to be repaired, would there, would there be a plan for that? Like, for example, where the West Hills Medical Center, right, there's a couple of things are really bad. Would that be the city or would that be the, the, the owner?
Yeah, the city has an ADA transition plan, which did a full sidewalk inventory quite a few years ago. And we also have a precision concrete that the council awarded a contract about probably three meetings ago where they're doing a, a full comprehensive inspection of all the sidewalks in the city and making recommendation on repairs to help the city, guide the city in doing future repairs.
Oh, okay. All righty, that sounds good. And like how you said that it was going to go out on social media. Is there going to be any way that, I, I know a lot of the Hispanic, Spanish speaking community has reached out to me that there's sometimes that things go in there without them understanding what it is. Is there any way that we could, you know, kind of take out, you know, put something in there with that?
Yeah, we can, we can actually convert this into Spanish as well.
Sounds good. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we, we go to number six. I mean, I'm sorry. Yeah, number six.
Council, can I ask you a quick question? Just for some clarification. I know there was some discussion about a payment plan as well as kind of income qualifications. Do you want to leave that up to staff? Do you want us to bring that back to you? I mean, we're not going to probably institute this program until probably the budget, so probably not until July. So we're kind of getting ahead of this, but I know that was something the council wanted to discuss and put together because of the new sidewalk ordinance and getting the, kind of all that, those documents squared away. Did you want us to bring that back with, you know, maybe a paint, a payment plan option? And then some income qualifications so we can kind of identify that?
Or are you looking, or do you want to? If we're going to do that, let's definitely bring it back so we can talk about just that. But maybe pass it as is.
And then bring back the, okay, perfect.
Okay, item number six?
Yes, number six. Chief, if you can kind of highlight us on how many sergeants you have are currently staffed here right now? And what we're trying to do here with these, with this temporary sergeant position?
Yes, I have, currently I have four full-time sergeants on staff. One is TAD to DEA on a passport. That's a two-year-long commitment. He's in his second year of that commitment. I have another sergeant that is on leave and should hopefully be back shortly. The problem I'm having is I have both of my corporals in acting sergeants positions. And I have one of my corporal that's coming close to the timeframe of where if we don't either remove him or make this acting or this temporary sergeant's position, there may be the possibility of property rights to this position.
Okay, so you have four full-time, but you, you only have two because you got one on leave and one's with the DEA, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so you, and it's only going to be a a temporary thing?
Correct. The city attorney has made a side letter in this, in this staff report to where the POA has agreed to it that the whichever corporal goes into this position and we decide to remove or delete this position from the, from the police department, that they're in agreement that that person will go back to their normal previous rate of a corporal and not have to stay as a sergeant.
Okay. And you don't anticipate coming back to council when this temporary sergeant position is done to ask for a full-time? Permanent sergeant?
For sergeant or officer?
Or sergeant.
No, not for, if, if, if the temporary goes away, then that, that will go away and I don't plan on coming back with it again.
I have no more questions, chief.
Any other questions? Okay, number seven, number seven, direct city manager, is there a council option for staff code enforcement? Did somebody bring that? I brought it up here, but did somebody bring that back for a future item or?
I did.
Okay, so you just basically want to know how much it's going to cost us and all that kind of stuff?
Right. No, I'm not trying to say let's hire a, right now. Definitely want to make sure it's budgeted. But I would like to see some of the numbers and see if we can fit it in in the next fiscal year when we start talking about budget. We can start looking to put that in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion to accept or deny the consent?
I'll make a motion.
We have to, sorry, do we have to make, when we make the motion, do I have to change?
So you want to make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the change to item five point five to prioritize people with disabilities as the language was stated earlier? And that's your motion?
That's my motion. Do I have to say it? Is that good enough? Do I have to say it?
You're fine.
That's what I want.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilman Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez? Councilman Ramirez?
It looks like he's no longer here.
Oh.
Yeah, he's no longer in this call. I don't see him anywhere.
Do you want to go on with the vote, Mayor Ramsey?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and go with the vote.
Okay, Mayor, Mayor Pro Kim Horn?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Aye.
Thank you, sorry. Mayor Ramsey?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Go to an item number six, ordered presentation discussion of potential action items. Number one, discuss direction and potential actual item updating sensitive receptor distant requirements for special cannabis operations. Sean?
Thank you. This was a future agenda item originally requested by Councilman Atkinson to, for staff to seeking direction from the council on this item as to how to proceed. Section nine dash five, one twenty-eight D twelve of the plan and zoning code states that cannabis operations, except for storefront retail shall comply with the distance separation requirements of schools as required by state law. In addition, all commercial cannabis operations shall not be located within eighteen hundred feet from any existing school or proposed school site as identified in the general plan. Measurement shall be from the property boundary to the property boundary. For purposes of that section, school means any public or private school providing instruction in kindergarten or grades one through twelve, inclusive but not, does not include any private school in which education is primarily conducted in private homes. And so, and just in comparison, because this takes out retail, our, the retail regulations are slightly different because it includes other types of sensitive uses, including schools where for, under all other commercial cannabis operations, it's related directly to the separation between schools. So on September third, city council meeting, the city council requests that staff provide a map that would identify the current radius from schools as stated in the plan and zoning code and what potential changes would look like if the distance was reduced to a thousand feet. If the council wishes to reduce the distance requirement, a subsequent zoning text amendment would need to occur. Staff has attached several exhibits to show the current eighteen hundred foot status, a six hundred foot status and a thousand foot status or radius from the same locations for the council to review. So there's four different locations, which is the the Klinga here and Unified School District Farm location. There's their pocket of school locations. And a Merced school location, which was identified in our previous general plan, identified a future school site off of Merced about halfway between Lucille and Jane. So we've identified that location and then also the Faith Christian Academy School location on Elm Avenue. So I have provided exhibits for those three locations, for those four locations. And so if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to. If the council chooses to proceed with reducing that distance requirement, staff would then proceed with the appropriate zone change or text amendment and bring that through the process through planning commission and back to the council for formal approval.
So I'm bringing this forward as a person like a one thousand foot distance. Possibly where it was, if I look on the map here.
When I look on the map here, I see, you see Pacific, Sean? The one thousand foot looks like it creeps a little bit onto the property on Blue Valley Automotive. Is that going to take them out of contention for the rezone?
Based on that map, yes, it would.
So what if we say like, we want to change it? If, if this is truly a thousand feet, we'd say, oh, maybe nine hundred and seventy-five feet or something like that. Yeah.
Capture up to Pacific, we can draw that line.
Right. So let's talk about why, why I believe we should do this. For one, that's going to open up six buildings on that street. Six buildings that have been sitting there doing nothing. Blue Valley Automotive has been for sale for years. Not one, nothing has happened. It's just sitting there. Why not open up to cannabis, the manufacturing or whatever it is they want to do? And the reason, when we look at our budget, Measure J is only going to be around for eight more years. It's going to be gone and we got to find a way to bridge the gap of one point something million dollars. How are we going to do that? The only way to do that is to bring in more revenue to the city. And the way we bring in more revenue to the city is to add more businesses. Now Walmart's not knocking down our door trying to get in. Neither is Amazon, neither any of these other companies, but the companies that do want to come here and keep wanting to come here seem to be cannabis. Not only that, when we look at our total budget, look at Measure J and we look at our cannabis revenue makes up twenty percent of our total budget, twenty percent. So ten percent, a little more than ten percent is coming from cannabis. We have to find a way when we lose Measure J to bridge that gap. How are we going to do that? I'm not going to be on council then, but you may be. You, you have enough time.
I have, Manny. I do have a question for you.
Yeah, sure. Manny will be here. So you two are going to be dealing with this when the Measure J has sunsetted and our budget loses one point five, something like that, one point five million dollars. So this is a way to start to bridge the gap. And I personally would like to see it so that it covers Blue Valley Automotive. It also increases the property value for those six additional buildings. It'll increase them more than what they're worth now. That's also going to bring in more revenue to the city when they have a higher property value. Anytime we get higher property values, it's never a bad thing. Did you have a question?
Yeah. Which side of the street are you talking about? All the six buildings on the west side of the road?
Yeah, they say anything, anything that's past that line of Pacific, doesn't matter what side of the road it's on.
Okay.
And those are the only properties that are zoned appropriately for it too, because it has to be manufacturing business light and those, the, all those properties there are zoned that way. But those are the only properties in that vicinity that are zoned.
And for clarification, nobody up here owns a cannabis business. I don't own a cannabis business, period. I don't care what anybody says. The people did not vote on making it eighteen hundred feet from schools. That is something the council put in themselves because when cannabis originally started, the council wanted to be very conservative on how they approached this. We have so much. We've done it for so long now that we kind of know what we're doing. And now we can start making these adjustments that we want to make, in my opinion. Tanya Stevens, I believe, is on the phone and will have something to say.
It should be under Jenny Jay.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Just waiting until she gets on her too. We can't wait until Measure J, Measure J stops because we would be in all kinds of trouble there. If we started something now, we could get a reserve up.
Right.
Other, are there already candidates that are willing to come?
Tony will probably be able to talk.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Sure. If they're not talking yet.
Can you hear me?
Oh, go ahead.
Can we turn her up?
Let me see, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you turn it up a little bit more?
Let me see, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Hello?
Yeah, it's not you. It's our speaker system. We're trying to turn you up on the end.
Okay, well, I don't want to be too loud. I'm a little loud anyway. Let me know when you can hear me, okay?
Go ahead, we can hear you.
This is Tanya Stevens with Midstate Realty. My opinion is that everything that we've got or had for sale or properties available on West Elm have been sold. The majority of those have been to cannabis companies. We've had the Napa property for sale for five or six years at the minimum. Every buyer that we've had that wanted to look at it has been a cannabis buyer. The homeowners behind there, I know that they're probably concerned, but they're already contending with being up against industrial property anyway. So their property is already being depreciated because they are bordering industrial property. So for the city, I think it's in their best interest, I mean, from my standpoint, to put those properties available to cannabis buyers. to put those properties available to cannabis buyers and perhaps generate some revenue. I, I don't know if you guys have any other questions for me?
Did you mention how long Blue Valley's been for sale for?
Yeah, it's been, this is Jennifer, and it's, it's my listing. It's been for sale since October of two thousand fifteen. And in two thousand eighteen, when you guys passed the cannabis ordinance, we immediately had offers. And then the buyers had to back out because of the distance that you, the council, put in place at that time. Even up to, not even less than two months ago, I have several buyers waiting to hear if something is going to change with that distance, and if it does, they're ready to make offers.
And in your opinion, do you think that changing the zoning would bring more value to those properties? Would it increase their value?
Oh, definitely. The, I've sold the property down on Elm. That closed for six seventy-five, that is half the size of what Blue Valley is or within that realm. And we've been listed at four ninety-nine, and we already increased our this price. So we anticipate it definitely increasing.
All right. Thank you.
Any questions, counsel?
No question, but just, just a, a comment. I'm still with eighteen hundred feet. I'm, I'm loving it, even though Ron has his opinion and Adam, I totally respect your opinion, but it's as if the city council changes, because first it was only going to be one cannabis place, which was the one, was that Have a Heart, Give Me a Heart, whatever that one is, by the, yeah. And then you add another one next to it, and the reasoning for that one in that location was because the previous police chief said it's a good spot, which in my opinion, and speaking to the, the citizens, it wasn't a good spot, but nevertheless, it's, it's there. So now we go here, the city council said eighteen hundred feet. You said eighteen hundred feet, so stick with your eighteen hundred feet from the schools and whatnot. I mean, that, that just puts it so much closer to their backyard, which everybody says that a few years is going to be legal, but we're not there yet. It's not legal yet. Yeah, the state says you can do it, but the feds, they still say no. But at the end of the day, you have to sleep with your decision, whether you think it's right, wrong, or indifferent. My thing is no. And it ain't a personal thing that I have against these companies because they are going to bring revenue and, and do what they do. It's just that the people that I speak to in reference to this are in the no more than the yes. There are some that, that say, yeah, sure, break, break it off, we'll take anything. And there are ones that are saying, no, you guys keep changing what you're doing. You change it every time. And for me, I mean, there has to be a line drawn, even though that line moves. There has to be a line where you say, this is where the line is drawn, this is where it stops at. But I mean, that, that's just from the other side of the spectrum, I mean.
Ray and I disagree with this because Ray's always wrong. I'm just kidding. But, you know, Ray definitely has some points that need to be considered. I would say that when council made eighteen hundred feet, it was just a way to start. It was a way, because there were so many what ifs with cannabis coming to town, that this is the way they were going to start it. They were not just going to go, the, the state has a law that says it has to be six hundred feet. Well, the council at the time says, we're going to make it like three times that and go to eighteen hundred feet. It was a starting point because we did not know as a council and a city what exactly was going to happen as cannabis came into town, how it would affect the town, how it would affect the people. You know, what were we going to have to deal with? Was there, the issues with crime, was it going to increase crime? We didn't know what was going to happen. So the council made eighteen hundred feet as a starting point. It was never a, a thing that was, we are never going to go past or we are never going to go less than eighteen hundred feet. It was just, let's start here and see how it goes. If it goes well, as I said, the council didn't promise it to the people. They just said, this is where we're going to start, eighteen hundred feet. If it goes well, we can slowly go back. Now, I want it more than the state of six hundred feet. I want it, we're like, what, sixty percent more than what the state is, the state law is? So we are still going above and beyond what the state is, the state law is. But we have come to a point now where we know what's going on, we know how to handle the cannabis businesses. We need to bring in the revenue, we need the jobs. Now, these buildings have just been sitting here collecting dust, they're not doing anything. I think it's time that we lower the distance, we get more revenue, we bring in jobs. They rehab those buildings. Sean, if they come in, what would they do? They'd put in, you know, plants and things, they would, what's the word I'm looking for?
Typically, they're, they're required to do off-site improvements, so sidewalks, you know, street trees, they'll do frontage improvements, they typically do elevation improvements.
Just like any other business.
Yeah, because a lot of our security requirements, a lot of our building standards for cannabis companies kind of harden the target per se, so they, they, they're forced to do a lot of improvements to their facilities, a lot, you know, there's a lack of maybe parking, so additional improvements have to be done. They put a, put a substantial amount of money into these, these facilities. So you would see that.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not thrilled that that's the only businesses that want to come here, but that's the only businesses that want to come here right now. As I said, Blue Valley's been on the market for five years with nothing. It's been sitting there empty. The city could have gotten revenue out of that building already if it had sold to a cannabis company, and we're not. We're missing out on revenue every month that we let it go on without changing the zone.
Yeah, I think every cannabis business we have now, if you drive by it and you didn't know it was a cannabis business, you couldn't tell it was.
The other cannabis businesses that did come in down Elm, you can see the improvements that they made with the buildings and sidewalks and the landscaping. They also have security set up, so it looks a lot better than it did before.
I wanted to add one thing. I know Councilman Horn had asked questions about the properties that would be impacted, sorry, geez, impacted. Would be those west properties on Elm, and then there are some, as you go a little bit further north, now that you, you shrink that line, there are some on the, on the east side. Because there's, there's industrial land that's still above, I think some of the, a couple of storage lots that are right there before you get to Lucille. So basically, as you hit Lucille, that's kind of the, the corner where that, that industrial type zone land stops. So it would, there would be a little bit more added land in that vacant area, I think where the city redevelopment agency owns some land out there, right there by Pacific. So there is some additional land that would, that's currently zoned industrial that would be eligible, probably maybe three or four parts, more parcels.
Okay. Any other questions for?
This is Councilman Ramirez. You know, on the cannabis, I, I know, I know we, there's a lot of companies that do want to buy a lot of buildings. And I know, I know, it makes it difficult, you know. Councilman Atkinson has a, a good point. Councilman Singleton has a great point. It, it's, I know it's, it's difficult for us, and I know we look on, we, we look at the the revenue they could bring in, and, and I know how Councilman Atkinson said that there's no other business coming in. I'm just, and, and I'm all for it, it's just, I'm afraid that if a building opens up, you know, around that, that eighteen hundred that we, if we approve it, that it will get closer to the schools a, a, and kids and neighborhoods where, where we start losing citizens and people out of, out of Kalinga. And, and I see everybody's point of view that, yeah, that building's been, you know, staying there for a while. But is there any way, I mean, that we are looking outside, like, Kalinga, like, besides in there? Or have they, any other cannabis companies have, have looked at a plan of building, their own building outside the, that limit?
The zone like that, except for possibly, well, we're going to, if we short, I mean, it might add some land that the city has, but
From my understanding.
No matter, it's actually zoned.
My understanding, I, and I typically defer, I, and I kind of point the developers or the potential buyer to real estate agents in town because they're more versed in kind of the, the market and what's available. My understanding is there's not much available, if at all. The industrial park is completely purchased up, so there's no available land unless someone actually backs out, but we've had recent sales in the industrial park. Individuals that I've been in contact that are looking to develop in the next probably six months. But as far as I know, there's not a lot available, but the real estate agents are probably better than, better to answer that question.
And this isn't a guarantee that a cannabis company is going to move into one of these buildings. All it's saying is it is available for cannabis companies as well as every other company that could have moved in before. So we're not saying, oh, look, all six buildings are going to be cannabis companies. No, that's not what, at all what's going to happen. All this is doing is changing the zone, so if a cannabis company wanted to come in and buy one of those buildings, it would be able to. It's not a guarantee that they are going to do it.
Yeah, because, for like, like, for a little example, I know we're, we're, we're putting a water park right there on, by the gazebo, right? As I'm understood?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so, you know, with, with that, yeah, with, with that, there's the, the, where they sell the Green Wave, where they sell that, and then I think there's something else coming in. You know, we are going to have kids in that, that platform. And, and I'm, like I said, it's great revenue, it's great. And Councilman Atkinson makes a great point about Major J, it's going to run out. But is there any, like, like I said, that's one, one of the examples that kind of worried me, that me, we're having kids on that water pad, that we're, you know, and we're going to have exposure for people being around there. I just, I'm afraid something could just generate a bad view on that, you know?
So, so that's already been approved, so this item doesn't address the dispensary located downtown or the splash pad that's going in. And this is just using the distance from schools. So right now, the state says that any cannabis-related business cannot be within six hundred feet of a school. Kalinga's rules say they have to be eighteen hundred feet from a school. And so this item tonight would be saying that they could move a little bit closer in and be within a thousand feet of a school, which still is beyond the state's requirement of six hundred feet. But it's not changing anything in regard to the dispensary that's downtown or the splash pad. Those were already voted on and approved, but this particular item is just addressing the distance from schools. So it's reducing it a little, but it's still keeping it above what the state requirement is.
Right, no, no, I understand. I'm just, what, what I'm saying is basically like, you know, how that pad is going to be there, and, and the other, other two things were already approved. It just, I, I, I'm afraid that in the long, in the long run, the future, we'll, we'll start getting closer and closer to the schools. Like, for example, if, if recalls, I know that, I, I know what we're talking about, about the, the distance. If, if recalls wouldn't have been a, 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 a food place, I wonder if a cannabis, cannabis, you know, company would say, oh, that's a perfect one to sell stuff or do something. Or, or the doctor's office, or, or the lawyer's office, or the old dentist's office, or stuff like that, it'll be next to, to a school, and, and I understand everybody's point. You know, there'll be a great revenue, revenue to, to other companies, you know, property owners and everything. I'm just, I'm, I'm just afraid that it'll start leading into neighborhoods a, a, and, and closer to the school. You know, I, I mean, if we could find a way where we could like pattern a hound or something, or, or these companies could build their own little building outside, something like that. I mean, it would be great, but I understand everybody's point, and, and I'm just afraid it would get near the school.
So those cool, those buildings are outside, inside the distance that the state law, we cannot go past what the state law is. We cannot go under six hundred feet. We absolutely cannot change that because that's state law. What we can change is where we were at from eighteen hundred feet to a thousand feet. Now, these businesses that we're talking about, or the, the street in particular that I'm talking about, are not going to be used for any kind of consumption. They're not going to be used for any kind of retail. So you're not going to have people going in and out trying to buy, you know, whatever it is that they buy in the cannabis world. These are just going to be places that are going to grow and manufacture. You will not be able to see in at all. If you walk by any of these buildings and, and they are a cannabis building, you will have no idea that cannabis is being grown inside. Nobody will know unless you know, you happen to know that that is a cannabis place. So.
Right, 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 right. Yeah, no, no, I, I, I see what you're saying. Like, for example, out there by Interstate United, I didn't even know that one. But like, for example, like, let, let's just say that there was a building right next to Post at Chaney. And I know, you know, you can't even tell if there's, what's going on in there. I'm afraid that, oh, there, there's a building that opened up, we'll start, okay, you know, there's somebody that wants to come in, pay a lot of money, and do this, let's, let's do it. That's what I'm afraid of, that, that it'll start moving like any buildings around, and that's where I was asking, like, if there's companies that, that offer, okay, we, we know this land is outside neighborhoods or schools or whatever, and we could build our own thing, I mean, if that was the proposal, I mean, that would be great, but, you know, I understand everybody's point, I understand Singleton, and, I mean, if we could get money, I mean, if we're struggling, I mean, it wouldn't be a bad idea or, or any reason, but I'm afraid it would just end up in neighborhoods where, you know, where the people start saying, oh, you know, they're doing it over there because that neighborhood doesn't look that good. You know, keep it over there, don't keep it in our good neighborhoods or, or good-lipped neighborhoods and stuff like that, you know, where we actually have to be fair.
But this doesn't have to do with neighborhoods, this only has to do with schools.
Okay, go ahead. Councilman Ramirez, the, the, it's not, it's not that it's going to be within eighteen hundred feet, just to kind of get clarification. It's still, there are certain zones in the city that cannabis is permitted in. So it's eighteen hundred feet from a school currently. However, it still has to meet the zoning criteria for the particular zone. And the only zones that it's permitted in is manufacturing business light, which is in the southernmost part of town, the northern part of town near the old Clermont facility, and on the eastern side of town in the industrial park. Those are pretty much the only locations. There is one location right there at Thompson, I think, and Polk Street, that would be, that, that is zoned MBL, that outside of the thousand, that would be outside of the, the thousand feet. But it's not that they could go anywhere, they would still have to be within that area. So that doesn't really, it doesn't, the, the change doesn't really affect most locations. It really affects that one location area we're talking about and potential property on Polk Street. Other than that, it, it still has to meet the zoning criteria, so it wouldn't be within neighborhoods if it's within eighteen hundred feet. It would still have to be zoned appropriately for that type of use.
Right, 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 right. I mean, I mean, the Napa building, I mean, that would be a perfect building. You know, I'm, I'm just saying that, you know, all of a sudden, some building opens up next, next to a nice neighborhood, and then we have a problem. That's what I'm trying to, trying to do, where we don't like, oh, it's okay over here, but it's not okay over here, or, or anything like that. Where the citizens start leaving and they're like, okay, we're going to get a good chunk of money for our house because of this, and then, hey, but then those houses don't get sold because, you know.
That's not us. So if, if a building is there, and it's by a nice neighborhood or whatever you want to call it, and it's in the proper zone to have a cannabis place, then, and the cannabis company buys the building, and they can go, what? Start a company there, right?
If it's, if it's zone industrial, or the particular.
As long as it's zoned correctly for it, yeah.
Yeah. They, they can't just build it anywhere they want, because that's, that's why we have zoning areas. Yeah, they can't build it just any, if they buy a building, and if it's not in the right zone, they'll have to sell the building, they can't build it there. And we can't do that.
I'm going to stay.
Don, are you still there, Manny?
Yeah, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Don, did you have a question?
Sorry, can you use your microphone so the public can hear you? Can you hear me? So, first of all, as a citizen, I'd like to know where, what phase this is, because I know a lot of citizens feel like they don't have opportunities to put input into things, even though it is advertised or it's on the agendas. The concern of mine is, has anybody ever reached out to the resources or the other community members, wards to see where they stand on this? Just because they don't say anything doesn't mean that they accept it. So has any, has that letter been sent to this board or the school council or the West Coast College to see what their? So has any, has that letter been sent to this board or the school council or the West Coast College to see what their stance is on this? Because I hear a lot of stuff in the community. And I also hear a lot that the council's not user friendly, so. People rather not come and they just kind of feel victimized by it all. So that's a concern of mine. Another concern of mine is. You say that, um, you know, it's gonna come, the buildings are there to be sold if they could. But I think the reality for most in the community that don't agree with this. Feel that they are gonna come and the door's being open for them and they've been handed along to people to do whatever they want and that's why they're here now. So that's a concern. Um, another thing is, uh. Have we, has the city put in any other uh, work or footing to bring other things here? My concern is with the marijuana, like, you say nobody else wants to come here, but the more marijuana we put, the more people are going to come here. That's my opinion, so. Um, those are some concerns of mine and I just think that there needs to be more um, community involvement as far as uh, council reaching out to. School boards and other people to see where they stand on this because, you know, we're all this together and when we start to unite is when our city's gonna succeed.
Now, when we started all this, we we did reach out. And we got, we got pros and cons from, from everybody. And uh, then, once we ended up doing it, we got more cons than we did, I mean, we got more pros than we did cons. I mean, people started really liking it and they go, whoa, we can't even tell they're there, you know, and and then we're getting more police officers. And fire people and and different things like that, because, because our tax rate's going up. And that's what people really want to see. They want to see that kind of stuff. I mean, and we, we are trying to bring in other businesses. Before this pandemic came out, the whole council was already signed up to go to. Uh, a place in Las Vegas where you go to and actually talk to the business people. And we had that, we, we had sent uh, three or four people to it before. This time, the whole council was going to go there and we were going to go as a team and we were working out things. We were going to wear T-shirts for Colinga and. And all kinds of things, but it didn't make a reality because of the pandemic. But we're still trying to bring things in, but when we, we don't have anything in here, we're trying to survive. Right now, basically. And 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 it's actually working. Because now we're going to talk about having a reserve on our budget and all of our bills are paid. I've been here for a lot of years. They said, what have you done, Ron? I go, think about it. I mean, you, we brought in the, we brought in the um. PVSP, we brought in the uh, state hospital jobs. I mean, a lot of people that worked in the oil companies went to work out there and they're getting better pay and stuff. So we are open to the people, but people have to come here too. I mean. We, we try to have our meetings. We had public hearing and other meetings where we went to their, to their meetings and stuff. And uh, I can, I can say this because I, I've been here a lot longer and we have pushed it. And then, if there's something else that'll come here, let us know what it is and we'll go after them.
Like to go off of that is we do contract with the Fresno Economic Development Corporation. Who actually goes out and finds businesses to try and come here. We also have a, a group called Chris Comm that we pay every month. Who also does our economic development. So yes, we do try and get other businesses to come here. The problem is, is our population is so small. And our um, median income is also so small that these businesses don't want to come here. They literally don't want to come here. I've been with Marissa. We've gone to some. Places before and talked to businesses. Uh, what's your city? Colinga? Uh, sixteen? No, we're not coming there. Thanks, though. And then they'll literally shoe us off, like, we're, we're nothing. And this happens all the time. And if we're not going to grow the population, we're not going to grow the businesses. We're never going to get these big businesses that people want. Uh, is. People do want to live here. Believe it or not, we are one of the fastest growing cities in Fresno County. Uh, we have tons of up um. Houses that are coming down the line, apartments, um, senior housing, uh, an Alzheimer's center. Possibly another developer. We are having lots of people who want to come here. We were just ranked number one in the whole state of California for most affordable city. So yes, people do still want to come here. People are still going to be here. Our population is going to grow tremendously over the next few years. Um, we have to have jobs for those people. We have to have a police department for those people. We have to have a fire department for those people. Those, those things aren't going to pay themselves. And the only way that we're going to get those things paid is if we bring in the businesses that do want to come here and bring in the revenue that they bring.
Mayor Ramsey, this is a discussion item, so I don't know if you want to allow um, for the public to make any comments, but I did notice on the screen that there's a hand raised.
Okay. Counsel? Okay, go ahead. Who, who is it?
This is Tony Stevens again with Mid, Midstate Realty. I just wanted to make a clarification. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make a clarification. I think there might be some confusion. But the property that you guys are looking to expand at the thousand feet is already industrial property. There's already industrial buildings there. It's just allowing it to be utilized for cannabis. And I think. Um, that there was a little bit of confusion and perhaps if if. People would look at other cannabis buildings that have already um. Been rehabilitated and see the construction and what they have done, then they'll be able to see that they are. Um, improvements to West Elm instead of a detriment. So I just wanted to make that um, known and. Bring that to your attention.
Thank you.
Thanks.
No.
That's not zoned for it, no.
That's not in the same zoning area. Is there another? Nathan, go ahead.
Hi, guys. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, I just want to point out a couple of different things. Some of the arguments I've heard tonight are the exact same arguments that we heard when we were talking about the dispensary and the marijuana to begin with. And none of those frictions came to truth. None, not even one. We've had less than a handful of calls to any of these places. Most of the things that have been called for uh, in a, in a, have been petty theft out of a car. That could have happened anywhere. And so, um, yeah, that's really not a deal on this. And that's why that last time when the council asked uh, for people's opinions, that council. Researched, asked people to come in and they said this information was not true. And that was actually been proven. It's been talked about by our previous police chief. I think our current police chief has talked about it. It, by putting it at the edge of town, that is actually what you're doing, is putting it at the edge of town. You know, we're, they're asking to go to the edge of town. That is where this is. There's not any better spot for them to go. There, I mean, the buildings are already built up at the edge of town. This doesn't open up the opportunity. To bring in stuff next to a school, next to a place that's not zoned. It does not do that at all. That's not what it does. And so I would just say that. I wonder how many people are worried about being shamed on Colinga Chatter. And that that makes it uh, uh, something in their decision making because this is about our city, our police and our fire. And let me tell you, if that dispensary, the one that we have right now goes out of business, you're going to be cutting police and fire. So you need to come up with a way to replace that. I come from a council member that, that lived in a debt deficit of four million dollars, wondering what we were going to do. That's why the mayor knows what's up. That's why my guess is he's going to support this. Because he understands that he doesn't want to be in debt again. And you guys don't want that. You don't want to be in debt. You want to have that money. This is not a deal where you're putting people at risk. It ha, it hasn't been, it, it's not been, there's no proof that that has ever been the case. So that idea, I know it's scary for some to understand, but that's just not true. And so I ask that you guys do the right thing so that future councils and yourself are not going to have to go back and try and tax the public again. Like, like Atkinson said, you have to make up a million point five dollars. And plus, you have dispensaries that who knows whether they're going to last or not. Just so you know, Have a Heart has already changed hands twice. And they're in legal issue right now with high times. So just saying, nothing is a guarantee. Except for the opportunity that you create. And not only that, think about those jobs. Think about the jobs that are going to be brought in from those businesses. You're going to deny people to get jobs in a time right now? Those are essential businesses. This is a COVID deal. Those businesses can survive. They can make it. We can give people opportunity. So please take that into consideration. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. You have a question?
Yeah. One more thing. Um, you know, it's not just about the fire employees, it's about the people in the community. And also, another thing is, it ain't about quantity, it's about quality. We want quality in our city. We want a, we want a quality city. We want to protect what we have and. Yeah, you can bring in a lot of volume, but that doesn't mean that it's gonna um, make our city any better. That's just my opinion.
Thank you. All right. Okay, counsel, uh. What would you like to do on this? Anybody, anybody like to make a motion?
I think Ray wants to make a motion approving this. So I'll make a motion approving this to uh, changing our distance to one thousand, or changing our distance to Pacific, whatever that number is, that will include from Blue Valley Automotive. What is that, west or?
North, south.
Southwest.
Southwest, whatever. Yeah.
Okay. And just to clarify, just so, and for the public, because I know there may be some confusion that this is officially not being, it wouldn't or wouldn't be approved tonight. It still has to go through a rezon process. So that's what also as part of the motion would mean, make sure that your directing staff to move forward with the rezon.
And yeah, and all that.
Ken, that's your motion? Is there a second? Oh, second. Okay, it's been made in second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey?
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilman Singleton?
No.
Mayor Protim Horn?
Aye.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, next we'll go to. Item number two. Direct, uh, discussion and direction regarding future use of the city property located on Jane Avenue. Thirty-three and Alpine.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor and Council, this is a future agenda item uh, by the council for staff to review the possible opportunity to develop the city's property at the southwest corner of Alpine, which is State Route thirty-three in Jane. Uh, staff has normal, no formal recommendation, but has provided possible options for the council to consider or pursue. Um, the city of Colinga currently owns four hundred and seventy-seven acres on the corner of Jane Avenue and Alpine. And currently purchased by the sewer fund um, in and or around two thousand two, two thousand three. In order to facilitate the relocation of the city's wastewater treatment plant. The land lies adjacent to Hockalitos Creek. It is in the flood plain, limiting development. On the full four hundred and seventy-seven acres. In two thousand and five, there were plans drawn, environmental impact report prepared and certified, and subsequent annexation completed as part of the development process. Since the annexation occurred, development has slowed and the increase in sewer influent demand has not occurred. Uh, eliminating the need to relocate the plant and unnecessarily increase rates on the existing ratepayers to pay for a new plant. The property is currently lying vacant and occasionally farmed through a lease with Loveless Farms. Who have been managing the land for the city over the course of these years. Uh, the city at the current time has no plans uh, for the future use of the property. However, the council has expressed interest in developing the property to accommodate. Future cannabis operations based on the interest that we've been shown, that that staff and the council have um, been shown. Staff was tasked with looking at the possibility of developing the land for something other than public facilities, which was the original intention of the annexation. So the property in, in question is a non-contiguous piece of land about six miles from the city. It currently has a land use designation and zoning classification of public facilities and open space conservation. And the open space conservation zoning is the land that's pretty much adjacent with, in and within, within the surrounding area of the creek. Because part of a, a lot of the property is actually in the creek, as you can see from some of the exhibits that I have provided. Um, and according to the land use element, typically provides areas for needed public and institutional facilities, including but not limited to. City, county, and other governmental agency properties. Uh, like post office, civic center, public schools, public playgrounds, fire stations, et cetera. Uh, public utility uh, rights away are also included in that zoning classification. The development activities for any future use that is not agriculture. At this time, it's unknown if the Williamson Act recognizes cannabis as a consist, as consistent with the Williamson Act land. Uh, staff has reached out to the state to confirm this, but we have not turned back since drafting the report. The property was intentionally annexed to accommodate the city's future wastewater treatment facility. Which allowed for the non-contiguous island annexation to occur. However, as years have passed, the need to relocate the plan has diminished and the council expressing interest in developing the property. Um, as it's seen a lot of interest uh, from the cannabis industry, uh, knowing that the property has been vacant for quite some time. Staff spoke with LAFCO and discussed the possible opportunity for commercial development on the property. And whether there should be any immediate issues related to the commercial development. To this property. And according to the original annexation documents, there was nothing that appeared in the documents that would preclude the city from doing so. However, uh, there was one item identified in the annexation documents related to the city's tax sharing agreement with the Fire Protection District. So once the property changes from city owned to privately owned, if and in fact that occurred. It would become taxable and the Fire District will be subject to receiving a portion of their, of said sales tax revenue based on the agreement. Although there may not be, uh, may not be any issues with related to the previous annexation. And commercially developing the land, there's several unknowns that would need to be further investigated or discovered. Once the development proposal is submitted by an applicant. Some of these unknowns are more related to Caltrans issues such as traffic. Uh, Fresno County issues, um, which includes traffic as well, the tax sharing agreement. Public safety, uh, obviously there's, there would be an impact to police and fire response times. And public utilities such as water availability, sewer, gas, and power. In addition, any new development will require land use entitlement permitting, such as a general plan amendment, a rezon. Which may include both a map revision and a uh, text amendment. Environmental, uh, most likely some type of environmental uh, impact report with associated studies depending on the type of use. Uh, master site plans and then depending on the development type of parcel map or subdivision map. Uh, these are just some of the things that the council would want to consider if they choose, if you choose to kind of go down the path of developing the property. Uh, staff seeking direction from the council as to whether they like to proceed with a council initiated development plan or wait for development to propose. A project and allow them time to proceed through the entitlement permitting process and address the future issues as they arrives. From a financial standpoint, the latter is probably the most advantageous for the city. If the council does not want to substantially develop the property for commercial use. The, the council could possibly proceed with a general plan amendment and rezon to accommodate potential outdoor activities um, in terms of cultivation. Um, similar to that of hemp currently permitted in the county. Which staff would anticipate having limited impacts to the surrounding areas such as traffic or other public facilities, as it would be similar to the uses. That are permitted for just typical agriculture. If the council chooses to proceed in that direction, staff would schedule a meeting with the county to discuss the proposed rezon and general plan amendment. For any potential concerns on their part. So I've attached uh, the land use diagrams and uh, maps that were prepared as part of the relocation plan for the wastewater plant. The staff just wanted to kind of provide an overview of some of the things to, to think about uh, as looking to develop this property because it is an island and it's about six miles from. The corporate limits of the city. Um, and to have the council begin a discussion in terms of, you know, how you may want to approach. Uh, this property based on the interests that the city's been receiving. Any questions?
Excuse me. We sold the property. It would still stay in the. The limit, the city limits of Colinga.
We sold, yes, it's still annexed, so it is in the corporate boundaries of the city, yes.
I just wanted to get that clear. It's like, we said, we just sell it and that way we can get rid of it. Fresno County, um, that, that wouldn't be Fresno County, so that would still be the city of Colinga. Okay, thank you. What do you guys think?
I mean, I think it's perfect. It's way outside of town where people want it to be here.
Yes.
So. It's great. No more revenue to help offset Measure J, I mean, maybe there's a.
Think it's perfect.
Do you need direction on which path to take?
It's, it's really going to depend on what the council wants to do. I mean, do you want to? It's really gonna depend on what the council wants to do, I mean, do you want to wait for somebody to put together a proposal with a sale, or like, for, like, to purchase the property? Or does the council desire, I think, in my opinion, I think if you start going down the route of like more substantial intense commercial development, then you're gonna run into a lot more environmental issues. And not, I say environmental because it covers traffic, it covers, you know, you're, you're kind of what I say the bugs and bunnies as well out there in that particular area where it's been traditionally ag, fallow land. But you're, you may run into more utility issues and traffic issues with substantially development, where if you keep it potentially similar to its natural state in terms of like more of an agricultural type use, then I think you may run into a limited amount of impacts and have less issues with perhaps the county. Because I know that we, and I'm not sure what the number is, but when we annexed the state hospital and the prison, they take a portion of our Transportation Development Act funds because those roads are not ours, that people travel to get to that facility. We don't maintain the frontage, there's no sidewalks obviously in that area, but we don't maintain the roads in front of the state hospital and the prison. And so we actually have to take a portion of our Transportation Development Act funds and provide those to the county as an offset to those traffic impacts in that area for maintenance. When it's directly attached to the city, then we don't have to do that because we take over the roads, we manage the sidewalks and those types of things. So I feel like there may be more impacts to the city. Water availability is another thing. What, who, you know, if you substantially develop with the commercial development, it may make it very difficult, size, the size of the lines may be, may be difficult to accommodate that much. Those have to be analyzed, but this thought off the cuff, I think that there may be more issues related to that. Sewer is another issue. There's no connection, there's no tie-in to the sewer system. The water and the state hospital and the prison have their own wastewater waste facilities, which means they collect everything and they treat their own wastewater. We were planning on building the trunk line out to the new site and at the cost, almost ten years ago, at almost nine, I think nine million dollars, just to build a trunk line to bring all the sewer from the city out to that new location. You have smaller pipe going back, but it's all, it's all based on how deep it can go as well. You make sure it has to go down gravity for the most part. But there'd be substantial improvements that would have to occur, but I don't know how we would be able to handle the sewer and water, obviously, and natural gas, too.
Sean, when we were doing all this, did we get rightaways? From the, from where we went to, because I, I remember talking about rightaways and.
I don't think, we didn't get that far.
Got them or not?
We didn't get that far. You know, we got to the point, I mean, I remember when I first came on, this has kind of been the middle, but I remember running the, the environmental impact report and for both the trunk line and the plant and going through our, you know, the design build process that we went through. And it, we, we got to a point where we had, we had it designed to about probably seventy percent. But then once, you know, once you start getting cost estimates and realizing how much you have to raise rates, that kind of, that's where it kind of slowed down. And when you didn't have substantial development, like, ready to pay for it, it was all gonna be burdened on the current ratepayers. And so that was the choice of the council to stop that project. And we really haven't seen that increase in our, our influence to necessitate, you know, moving the plant, building a bigger plant. So we feel like we have the expanding compatibility or the capacity of the existing plant, so. But no, I don't think we do, so there's, there's a lot of improvements that would need to be done at that site.
Well, if, if we put it out there and somebody made us a proposal, and, and we could, we could put it in there, that we have to. What did we used to do on, on properties that, where we had to accept a proposal? What was, what was that called? Where they go in and fix up the land and everything?
Well, with redevelopment, it was a development disposition agreement, the DDA. However, I mean, in this case, it kind of depends on what the council wants to do in terms of the use of the land now. Right now, the land's public facilities, you really can't do anything unless the state of California or the federal government or the city wants to build, you know, a new city hall or government building, post office. So the property would need to be rezoned, which will include a general plan amendment, so you'll need to go through that process. So, but if the council chooses, you know, hey, you want to go with, you know, let's just look at ag and we can, you know, if you want to update the ordinances to allow cannabis in an ag zone, you could do that. And then you kind of, it looks like hemp, it'll, you maybe allow buildings like, like the county would. The city could, I mean, staff could look at what the county ordinances are, what other counties are doing. Because there are a lot of counties of north that permit cannabis in county areas. We can look at what their regulations look like, where I, you know, I think that we'll see less of an impact to the area by just kind of, because I mean, if you plant hemp there, or you plant cannabis there, it's gonna look and smell the same. You're not gonna know the difference.
We're just kind of giving you direction and say, I think the most beneficial and quick, most beneficial way for the city is to possibly go in agriculture directions, would you agree with that?
I think, I think from a planning standpoint and from a, like a permitting standpoint, it's probably, it probably would be the most advantageous for the city.
Okay. Okay.
So you'd have to look at rezoning the property to ag, and then you'd look at updating the text and the ordinance to allow, you know, cannabis in ag zones, and then make sure if you want to try to keep it maybe similar in that area, then make sure you have the right distance requirements where it precludes it from anywhere in town, that's what you're trying to.
And there is already.
Look in the Williamson Act to see if it'll.
Well, the Williamson, and that's where, we'll still investigate that, and that's where a lot of this stuff gets sticky is because the Williamson Act is designed to credit ag for keeping, keeping land in agricultural production. So you get a kick, I mean, you get a cut on your property tax bill, right? So, but I don't know how that coincides with legal, with like cannabis. I imagine it works with hemp because hemp is legal. But I'm not sure how it applies to commercial cultivation for cannabis, because technically, it's still producing some type of crop. So we would have to talk to the state and see how they recognize that, to see if we would have to cancel the Williamson Act in order to just grow and potentially, you know, have maybe some other ag buildings on the, on the, on the parcels. Or parcel, however the council would want to break up the parcel, if that's the case. We can bring back something, we can bring back examples and maybe just kind of do an over, create more of a discussion because it is a big piece of property, you know, we can bring something back to kind of at least provide some additional information as it evolves.
Your mic is muted.
What would occur is, I mean, is when you go through the planning process, like a general plan amendment or rezon, we're gonna have to notify the surrounding property owners. So when we start making those decisions and doing those things, they're gonna be notified of those changes. Because any kind of like rezon, you know, conditional use permit, those types of permits will require public notifications. So pretty much any adjacent property owner would get notified. And in this instance, they're gonna have to find their own water, I mean, if they're gonna do outdoor grows, they're gonna have to find their own water. So we'll have to make stipulations in there, too, because we won't be able to provide domestic water to that, that many acres of ag.
Now, would you need a motion or just consensus?
I think just consensus, I mean, it kind of clarify what, and I've, I've been kind of spitting a lot of stuff out, just kind of, you know, ideas, but I just want to make sure the council is receiving what, what you kind of asked for, so.
Yeah.
And there was a, a lot of stuff that they said we couldn't use that land for, you know, because after we found out we weren't gonna put the sewer system and stuff, so. We thought we were dead in the water with that land for a while, and, but I think we ought to, we ought to look into this, in the ag part of it, and see what we need to do and put some feelers out there and see if they can get any proposals of any kind.
Good with that.
Manny, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm perfect with that.
You guys want to do that? Okay, that's our consensus.
There you go.
You have any questions, anybody?
I think, I think I can put together at least something, I'll bring something back to the council, just kind of an overview of kind of what the direction would look like, and then we'll get a subsequent.
What we need to do and everything.
Move forward.
Thank you. Okay, next, we'll go to item number four. Discussion and direction, potential action item regarding City of Colanga Youth and Government Program.
Yeah, this is something that I'm, I, I'd like us to get into, because you got a lot of young youth out there that needs a little bit of direction. And I mean, what way to get a benefit from it from them and from us? I mean, because we can always say volunteer, but when you say volunteer, it's for free. Now, if you give them a little more incentive, they come in, they may end up in one of these positions, and that's kind of what you want. Because when I first ran, my son had no idea what was going on, lost, lost kid. Didn't know what city council did, and neither did his friends. And it died down, but with the elections and all this craziness going on, their minds are sparking like, hey, what are they doing that for? Who are they? What are they? So to give them more direction, I go to the direction. And I ask for both hands from Marissa to help me get something here, going to where you can get these kids here to learn. Because you may have a future city manager out there, or city council. Sean's job is a good one for, you know, them to come right here and to learn about that. I mean, I just think it's a, it's a great program, but I'll let the, the main one, go ahead and clarify any questions you may have.
Come on, main one.
Yes.
Thank you, so this was a future agenda item requested by Councilman Singleton. I am recommending that the council move forward with it. We spent quite a bit of time discussing it and developing, putting his ideas on paper. And so the youth and government program is really one umbrella program that has like three subprograms within it. And the cost is minimal to the city's general fund. It's not something that the cost would be felt immediately, it's something that would be included in next year's budget, and that's when we'd start the process. And so, well, I shouldn't say that, so we would start the process now. They would start in their roles when it's budgeted July first. So that's why it's on here for approval tonight, so that you can say, yeah, we want to move forward with that. But the funding would start in next fiscal year. And so of the program, there's really three subprograms. The first is a junior council program, which would allow, I, I keep referring to them as children, but this age group is fifteen to twenty-two, so some young adults. They would be able to serve on this junior council, and so any interested person could apply. There would be one junior council member from every council member's district, so they'd go through an interview with the council, and the council person for that district would select who their junior council member is going to be. If for some reason, like Mayor Ramsey didn't have any one applied from his district, but another council member had five, he could pick someone from the other district to represent his district, so that each council member had a junior council member. These junior council members would serve a term of two years. So throughout your four-year term, you would essentially have two different junior council members. They would attend monthly junior council member meetings, and they would discuss items within the district. So they'd have an agenda, the meeting wouldn't be open to the public because it would, I don't want them to get in trouble for not filing, following the Brown Act exactly, but that's the guidelines that we would follow so they could start to learn it. And they would be paid a stipend of twenty-five dollars per meeting, the meetings are once a month. And then they would do an annual presentation to the city council, and they would be paid fifty dollars, a fifty-dollar stipend for that presentation meeting. And so things that they would do is look out for things within the district that they're representing. Maybe they notice that there's some streetlights out, or lighting's bad in a certain area, or one street needs to be repaired, or there's not a safe route to walk to school on a certain street. And so they'll take all that information and they'll do an annual presentation to the city council. There's information here on how they would apply and what the selection process would be, and then what the benefits are to them. Of course, they're gaining the experience, and we're hopefully developing future council members, or maybe not even council members, but maybe they get the experience and they run for the school board or the Parks and Rec district. And so that, that program summary is there for you. Then the second subprogram is the Youth Opportunity Program. So in California, we used to have what they referred to as at-risk youth, and California changed that term. And so I only bring that up because maybe some people aren't familiar, the new term is at-promise. So it sounds a little funny when you're reading it in the language, but that's the new term. And so these would be children or young adults between the ages of fourteen and twenty, who would be essentially recommended by the police chief and the Police Officers Association. There would be two per fiscal year. They would be assigned to work somewhere in the city. It could be at city hall, it could be at the police department, fire department, public works, utilities. And they would complete one hundred hours of service to the city. And then they would, at the end of that, earn a scholarship for fifteen hundred dollars. If they do well, they can have that extended one time. So then they could do another fifteen hundred hour, or I'm sorry, another one hundred hours and earn our second fifteen hundred dollar scholarship for a total of three thousand dollars. And there would be two students per fiscal year. The third and final part of that program is the Future Public Servant Program. And so it's very similar to the second, only they're not at-promise youth. They are people in the community, young people in the community, ages sixteen to twenty, who have an interest in working as a public servant in the future. So maybe they have a dream to be a city manager, or a finance director, or a community development director. And so they would do this, a similar thing, they'd be assigned somewhere in the city. We would get the benefit of the work that they're doing for us at a very minimal cost, and they would complete a certain number of hours in order to earn a scholarship. So again, after completing one hundred hours, they would get a scholarship of fifteen hundred dollars. It could be extended one time, there would be two students selected per fiscal year. And so the maximum cost to the general fund, assuming that everyone got extended, which may or may not happen, but assuming that happened, the maximum cost to the city's general fund would be eighteen thousand five hundred dollars for the year, which, that's for all three of those subprograms, which is much less than the cost of us hiring a part-time employee. So the city is getting that benefit. And then, of course, the youth members are getting the benefit of gaining the experience, developing professional networks, and earning scholarships or stipends.
I think we, we kind of, we should consider that we owe this to our young youth to give them the opportunity that we never had. Because we could have been in this position long before if we had known, but we, we didn't. I mean, I ran on some other thing, and he ran for some reason, and Rob was born here, but that, that's different. I mean, we all had our, our different agendas to get here. But if they have this opportunity given to them, you, you never know how far they can take that.
I think this is a great idea, I really look forward to it, and trying to mentor some of these kids and letting them know why I'm right and Ray's wrong.
Yeah. It's a good program. The, the cops had a program almost like this, it was the Explorer Program. And eventually, I'd like to see that even come back, because they had bikes, motor, motorbikes for them and stuff, and they'd go out the creek and do all kinds of stuff, and then help, help with parades and all kinds of stuff like that, too, and it was a good program. I think this is a great program, especially with the college scholarships. Because we have a lot of smart kids out there now, and they know computers like crazy, so I think this is a good program.
Yeah, being someone that was at that age, a teenager, actually, I was involved with the city for just over three years until I got out of high school, and it was a huge benefit. I learned a lot more than what I would have just sitting at home. Got to deal with a lot of the public as well.
You and your brother were. God, you're making me really feel old.
This, this would be a good program, very good program.
Yeah, I think, I think so, I think, I think I'm actually happy that somebody brought it up. I mean, even me, I'm trying to work with the youth, and, you know, it's hard because they're, all they hear is no, 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 every single corner. And I'm trying to get, you know, same as Singletary and all of you guys, trying to get the youth, you know, out of their house and to think for the future for our community. Because like you guys say, they could be city managers, or future councilmen, or anything like that. And I remember when I was growing up. I remember when I was growing up in town, I mean, we have our arcade, but we were able to get out and go do something. Right now it's our time for these, these kids and I think it's a great idea and. And not only just that, I think we need to outreach even more into organizations to, to try to help these kids and, and, you know, we're, we're, we're the big brothers to them. We're the big brothers and this is where we start and that's where our future is at. And like I said, you know, i- it's hard to see these kids are getting, getting the no's and hopefully, you know, we could get more yeses.
Do you need a motion on this or a consensus?
Um, I actually need approval. Um, so. If you want to move forward with this, I need to know because we'll start the advertising process so that the programs will actually start next fiscal year when they be funded. So we have to have the youth members lined up to be able to start then. Um, so I do actually need a motion that you want to move forward with this and then we would include the funding in next fiscal year. Um, and we are, as staff, recommending it, um, but, you know, the council, how you want to.
I'm going to do a smart thing because I, I'm just going to go on a limb on this one, Adam. I'm going to make a motion.
I got a, I got a quick question beforehand. Uh, I, I either didn't hear it or, or it wasn't, it wasn't said. Where will they be doing their meetings? And who will be watching over them while they're doing their meetings?
Uh, so I probably didn't say that. It is in the staff report. So they'll, they'll hold their meetings here. Uh, they won't be public meetings, like I said, just because I don't want to get them in trouble if they don't follow things to the T because the point is for them to be able to learn it. Um, and so they need to be able to make mistakes. Um, and so I will be here with them. Um, I'll have agendas for them based on what they feel like discussing. Um, and then they will have an annual presentation for the city council. But they basically are junior council members for your district. So you can say, you know, we want to talk every so often or. You know, we, however you choose to communicate with the person, they get their stipend based on their, attending their monthly junior council, uh, meetings. But you can establish any form of mentorship and communication with them that you feel appropriate.
Are we, are council members allowed to volunteer to help with those meetings too?
So you could. Um, I would be very careful because it could be a Brown Act violation if multiple council members come, so it may be good to rotate council members through. Um, but they, their meetings will likely be during the day. Um, so it will depend on your availability.
Did we have a motion?
Uh, go ahead and make the motion.
We have a second?
I'll second there.
Been made in second. Uh, roll call please.
Councilman Singleton?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey?
I also vote aye. Thank you. Okay, we'll go to item number seven, city managers announcements.
Thank you. I just have one announcement. I just wanted to make sure that the public is aware. That, uh, we do have that grant available through self-help enterprises for the rent, mortgage and utility assistance. So information can be found on the city's Facebook page or on the city website. Or if anyone's having trouble finding it, they can call city hall, um, five five nine nine three five fifteen thirty-three and my personal extension is one eleven. Um, you can probably ask any staff member in finance. They also have the information and then there's a flyer posted, I believe, on the window of the front of city hall.
And those flyers are in Spanish and English?
They are in Spanish and English and they will be going out in the next utility bill.
Thank you. Any other? Is that all you have? Uh, okay, council members, you have any announcements? Uh, people have been asking me about shots and stuff. Uh, we, we don't know about, about any shots being done here in Colingas especially, but. You can get on the COVID, um. Uh, information line in Fresno County Health Department and, um. Uh, my wife did it and she, she has her first shot. She got it a day before yesterday and it only took about thirty minutes at the most. I mean, that's pulling in there, getting it done. The, the walking was the, the most she did, she's done because it's in the fairground, so you have to walk from the. From the one parking lot on Chance Avenue, all the way down to the ag building and then back. But other than that, she said, and her arm didn't hurt at all. So everybody has to have their own, uh, deal on that. I mean, if you, if you want the shot, uh, there's ways to, to get it, but, uh, if you go on that site, it'll tell you how to do it. And it was for people of seventy-five and over and I'm seventy, so I, I didn't get it. And then when the seventies came up, um, they ended up stopping the seventies because there were so many people trying to get on and there wasn't any spots. So I don't think it's open right now, but they said that more, uh, vaccines are coming, so. Uh, go to that website and it'll, hopefully we'll get it here in Colinga eventually.
Can I say something?
Yes.
My understanding it is in Colinga. It's an area, um, clinic over here by Walgreens.
Now, do you, do you need to?
I was informed of. I didn't go over there and check it myself, but that's what I've been told.
Okay.
There's other, there's other offices in town that are working on that. They're in the final stages of, uh, getting approval. There's a process. Um, for one of the injections, you have to have a, a special freezer for the Moderna. I think it is, you, you only need a refrigerator, but it has to be. Um, approved by the county. So the process is that the doctor's offices are having to, um, fill out the application to get approval. And then agree to, um, be a part of the movement, which is to vaccinate, um, fellow, uh, medical professionals. And then, um, you have to display special thermometers and then you have to have two, a backup, one that's a digital. So if, in the event the temperature dropped, then you'd be, you would be aware of that. And then they actually have somebody come on site and then come in, investigate it or look at your equipment and make sure, you know, everything's up to par. And then, um, you can receive the vaccinations.
And that's the area, um.
Area, I believe. I, I may not be saying that correctly.
Pizza place. No boxes.
Okay, Little Caesar's Pizza in the park in the.
Yeah.
Walgreens parking lot.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, uh, I have none. Uh, future agenda items, please?
Uh, yeah, I'd move for, Sean and I talked about this earlier, move forward with estimates for sidewalk repair on Elm outside the fire department and possible tree removal. You know, we talked about this earlier, so you kind of know what I'm looking for.
Anybody else?
Sorry, can you guys hear me? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Manny, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I want to, I want to take a look at a future, um, item that I want to put on, um, on Glen and I believe is. And it's right, right next to the Terraglin Apartments. Um, sometimes I sit there and the neighbors sit there and so many accidents about to happen. Um, I don't know how we could do to, to discuss a stop sign. Coming into Glen.
Corner?
Yes, it's a, it's that road, that road that leads to, um. Um, right next to, to the, I believe is Casablanca Apartments and Terraglin. But it goes into, i- it, it, it goes into Roosevelt and it goes into Glen. But a lot of people are, I mean.
Pine and Glen.
Yes, that'll be, yes, yes. That's correct. That'll be Pine and Glen. I want to see if we could put a stop sign or discuss what can we do right there because. On a daily basis, there's about almost five, six accidents about to happen and I'm sure there have been accidents already there that I've seen. And I wanted to see if, maybe a discussion on that, we could, uh, do something.
We got it. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, and, and also some of the crossing flashing lights, a lot of people can't see them because there's some trees covering them. Maybe you could look into that.
In that same area?
Um, the one on four is the truck route. There's, you know, one of them you press it and it doesn't work. And then if you press it, sometimes it works and then the tree, the tree branches are covering it.
Okay.
Okay, we got it.
Thank you.
First? Oh, yeah.
We're aware of a couple of the issues with the RFPs as referring to on Forest and, uh. Well, I, I had the city engineer look back a while because I think they synced them up incorrectly. So when you press one, it actually blinks on the one in the block down. So what happened was is, because they're all, they're all solar, so I think the actual transmitter was installed, they were installed at the same time. So. If that hasn't been fixed, then I'll, I'll double check on that.
Yeah, I, I checked them on, on Second Street because I got a phone call on that too. And one of the, the buttons that you push, it doesn't go in at all.
Okay, I'll, we'll get a little more in-depth analysis of why.
And I know what trees he's talking about too. It has a, um, a solar deal right there. Trees need to be cut back. It, it's doing it right now because there's no leaves on it. But when the leaves come, it, it'll block it, so.
Okay.
But almost all of them except, I, I punched them all yesterday, except for, um, the only, the only one that didn't work was the second, on Second Street. I turned that into Christie and she was going to have him check it.
Okay, great. We'll take a look at them now.
Thank you, Manny.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we're close, we're going to go into closed session. We have three items. First one's real property negotiations, government code five four nine five six point eight, conference with real property negotiators. Property APM zero eight five dash zero two zero dash five eight T. Located off Jane Avenue on Highway thirty-three in the Colinga. City negotiators are Marissa and Mario Samora. Negotiating parties are Cal Becker. And, or signing under negotiations for price and turnip. Uh, number two, conference with legal counsel, existing, uh, litigation, government code. Section five four nine five six point nine, D one, one case, Fresno Superior Court. Case number seventeen, C E C G O four two nine four, Fifth Court of Appeals. Case number F zero seven eight zero eight one, Nathan Bosberg. Um, versus Fresno County, or, um, County of Fresno. Um, number three, conference with labor negotiators. Government code five four nine five seven point six, city negotiators, Marissa and Mario. Employee organization, Colinga Police Department, or Colinga Police Officers Association, I mean. And that's all we have. Uh, is there anything that we'll have to, on, is there anything on, uh, that we'll have to report? Possibly, okay. And with that, we adjourn. Thank you.